This is Steve Lionel, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the March 9th, 2021 zoning board meeting. As Chair of the zoning board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4 and extended by Executive Order 2021-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, we are videoconferencing utilizing the Zoom application for this electronic meeting. Public access to this meeting is also provided via Zoom, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website, nashuainh.gov/318/ctv on Nashua's Community Link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings, and where applicable, notice to a butters. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website at nashuainh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case, followed by questions by the Board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons to wish to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the Board utilizes a light timer, which will not be available. However, the Board, all participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. They may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if they are unable to use Zoom. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations were submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Real-time public comment can be addressed using the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access or by telephone. Real-time comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments for future meetings via email to the Planning Department at planning@nashuainh.gov or by mail. Please be sure to include your name, address, and comments. Letters should be addressed to the Planning Department, PO Box 2019, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03061. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll-call vote. Zoning Board meetings will be held electronically until it has been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The zoning board, the Planning Department, and city staff thanks you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire or vice statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full board members in attendance. Myself, Steve Lionel, I'm Chair. Mary Ellen McKay, who is Vice Chair. Mr. Jack Courier, who serves as our clerk. Mr. J.P. Boucher and Mr. Rob Shaw. And we also have the following alternate member in attendance, Ms. F. Stathia Boras. In addition to board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Poirier, zoning coordinator. And let's see, is Mr. Matt Sullivan here? No, I don't see Mr. Matt Sullivan here. Okay.
Mr. Mankara is here.
Mankara.
Oh, Jamie Mankara is here. Okay, you joined after I switched my screen. Mr. Mankara is an alternate member. Given that we have all five full board members of attendance, the alternate members will be participating in the discussion but will not be voting unless one of the full board members recuses themselves from a vote. Let us start the meeting by taking a roll-call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Alternates may, okay, I already said that, alternates may participate if a full board member recuses themselves. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there are none.
Okay, so I will call a roll-call vote. Mary Ellen McKay.
I am present. I am in my home office, and there is nobody with me.
Mr. Courier.
I'm present, and there's nobody in the home office in my home with me.
Mr. Shaw.
Present, and there is no one with me in the room.
Mr. Boucher.
Present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Ms. Boras.
I am present, and there's no one in the room with me.
Mr. Mankara.
Present, and I'm alone in the room.
And I'm Steve Lionel, and I'm present, and there's nobody in the room with me. So I will now read the first case into the record. Owner Dorothy Grant, address AD Caldwell Road, Sheet 105, Lot 45, requesting special exception from land use code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory dwelling unit by replacing existing breezeway in one-car garage with a new breezeway and two-car garage with accessory dwelling unit above garage. This is in the R9 Zone, Ward 6. And Ms. Grant, I see you are here, so you have the floor. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Dorothy Lorraine Grant. I live at AD Caldwell Road in Nashua.
Please proceed.
I'm not exactly sure what.
Well, sort of walk us through what you have in mind. You don't have to read everything in your application. We have that in front of us. But just give us a general idea of what you're doing, and then the Board may have some questions for you afterwards.
Okay, my intention is to put a rental unit above my existing garage by adding an additional garage and building a rental unit above approximately 640 square feet. There'll be a storage space above the existing breezeway for my own personal use that would not be living space, storage space, and I believe all of the, correct, that would be the additional storage space, and I believe all of the measurements and variances within the guidelines and the boundaries that have been set up by the City of Nashua. We'll have a garage, there'll be an entryway on the side of the garage and a separate staircase inside the garage accessing, giving access to the apartment. There'll be an outside staircase on the back of the addition allowing access. I've noticed there are a couple other additions in the neighborhood, very similar. And I don't know if there's anything else I'd like to add or anything, any questions you have of me, if you'd like me to answer anything directly or impartically.
Thank you. Are there any board members who have questions for the applicant? Mr. Courier.
I just think it would be prudent to walk through the, if you weren't planning on doing so already, the criteria for accessory dwelling.
I was planning on doing that. I was going to wait until after the Board had finished with its questions.
Okay, great. I mean, most of my questions were just on whether those are all adhered to, and that was the only questions I had.
Okay. Are there other questions from the Board? No? Okay, I do have a question, and this actually relates to one of the special conditions for the accessory dwelling units, which is that there is required to be an interior door between the, interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit. I was having difficulty in the drawing determining where that was. Could you comment on that, please, Ms. Grant?
I had not planned on adding a egress for me to access that dwelling. I could add a doorway in my garage leading to their garage, which would allow me access to the interior staircase that's in the garage, and I could also access the staircase outside.
Okay, the garage is not, is not being claimed as part of the accessory dwelling unit, because that would certainly bump you over the 750 square foot.
There is a doorway on the exterior side of the house where you see, it says going up, there's a porch, there'll be a small deck porch area with an outside door that's accessible from the outside staircase.
I don't, in my view, that doesn't quite meet the requirement of an interior door to the, to the primary dwelling.
Yes. I have my friend here who helped me with the layout of the plan. If you don't mind, if he may speak on my behalf.
If he gives his name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Dawn Edward de Silva. I reside at 93 Newton Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire.
Thank you. Go ahead, proceed.
So if you go to the second floor, if you raise that drawing up, so on the second floor there, if you see that stairway coming up, there's sliders to the left of those stairs to enter into the kitchen, correct. So the landlady, Dottie, would be able to access not only through that stairway, but she could actually get through the deck stairs on the back of the building into the four-season porch area on the upper deck, into the sliding deck, or from her storage area, there's a doorway to get to that four-season porch to get to the sliders, if that helps.
I'm not sure that qualifies as an interior door from the ordinance. Maybe Mr. Falk from the Planning Department might have a comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as long as it's not like a duplex where there's no access whatsoever between one unit and the other, there has to be some, excuse me, some kind of an access between the main structure and the accessory dwelling unit, whether it goes through a four-season mudroom or the garage. Otherwise, they're going to have to create some kind of a doorway that has access between the principal dwelling and the in-law apartment. So I thought there was something in that screen right there, where it's right in the middle, that little mudroom area where it says 16 feet 6 inches, there's a doorway right there. I thought, you know, going from the main house where it's on the left there, going through that mudroom area into the, that area could possibly be something for access.
Yeah, but this drawing is showing a solid wall between the two garages, so that would
It would definitely have to have some kind of access through there.
Hello, this is Dawn. We lost our connection completely, so I dialed in.
Okay, we can hear you.
All right, so I had asked about if those access points were enough for the Dorothy as the property owner to have access to the new proposed unit, and I didn't hear anything after that. I apologize.
Well, it looks as if at a minimum there needs to be a door between the two garage bays. Because it looks, in the drawing here, I'm seeing a solid wall, and the ordinance requires an interior door between, to the primary dwelling unit, but the garage is not part of the dwelling unit, so I'm not convinced.
What would I have to do to remedy that?
Well, typically, there is some sort of interior door between the primary dwelling unit and the ADU.
May I, Mr. Lionel?
Oh, please, Ms. Poirier.
So thank you. I did go over the requirements with the applicant. Typically, in situations like this, when I have somebody looking to do projects like through the garage or access by the garage, I consider as long as they're able to go from the primary structure to the unit without having to go outside in the snow and the rain and the weather, it can be accessed from that primary structure to that unit without going outside, which is different from a duplex where you would have to actually go outside, access a door, and then go into the other unit.
So if they put a door in, Ms. McKay, you have a comment?
Yeah, and I have some questions. One, I'm seeing this the same way you do. I don't see the interior door. The ordinance literally says an interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit. My other question is this, is this a rental unit or an accessory dwelling unit? An accessory dwelling unit, so far as we've generally seen, has been an in-law or it's been some form of familial relationship. If this is a rental unit, does this make it all different?
No, unfortunately, by current state law, there is no difference. The state removed the requirement of any kind of relationship between the tenant of the ADU and the primary dwelling unit, other than requiring that the owner must occupy one or the other unit.
Can I have a follow-up here? Follow-up question would be, then, if they did remove that, you would think they would have removed the requirement for an interior door between the initial unit, the primary dwelling unit, and the accessory dwelling unit, because that gives people who are not remotely connected access to each other's dwellings. So I don't understand, if we're going to stick, the way I see it, an accessory dwelling unit, there needs to be an interior door, not a door that's inside of a covering, but interior to the two units. That's just my conundrum. That's how I see it.
Mr. Mankara, you have a comment?
I just want to comment that I agree. I don't see that it meets the requirement, and in this case, in fact, if I understand the plans correctly, you would have to go outside. You would have to go out from the, one of the garage units and either into the garage unit or access the exterior stairs. I definitely don't see that this meets that requirement.
The, I'm sorry.
Wait one moment, we have some additional questions, and then you can perhaps answer all of them together. Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I also agree, as far as I think that the intent clearly to me is that there has to be some way to connect in between the primary dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit. I do think that certainly one way to perhaps most easily overcome this would be to just put a door between the two garage bays, and then that exists. As far as to Mrs. McKay's point, I think certainly a locked door would satisfy any concerns about access between and betwixt, but I think primarily the idea is that you don't have to go outside to get between the different units. But I think that's how, that's how you can overcome, maybe where there isn't some sort of familiar relationship, but there is, it still meets the requirement. So that's how I see it right now.
Mr. Shaw. Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing we generally or rarely see is a two-car garage with a wall between the two that goes from the ground to the ceiling. That's a little different. You know, if there was a door there, or not even a wall, usually walls like that are not necessary in a two-car garage, and the door doesn't have to be open all the time. It can, usually they're locked. I used to live in an in-law apartment, and I couldn't get through to the other unit at all. I had a, the door was always locked and double-bolted, but there has to be a way to get through. There has to be a lock, a door. Usually, the people keep it locked anyway, unless it's a family member that has medical issues, it needs to be open or something like that. But as long as they're, like, I think if they remove that garage wall, that would pretty much solve a lot of the issues here, because then you could go right from the garage, right into that mudroom area, into the main house.
Or if they put a door in that wall.
Or a door in that wall.
Yeah. We've seen that before, where there is a door, but it's locked, as you say.
Yeah, and I mean, they can lock it as long as, you know, the owner can get through if she needs to. If she owns a property, she would have the right to do that, as long as whoever's living on the other side would know that as well.
Ms. Grant, please, you can comment.
Yes, that would be a very easy solution to this problem. My garage is attached to my home, although it's not living space, it is attached to the home, and when we constructed the new garage, I will put a egress doorway leading into the new garage so that it would allow me access to the dwelling above.
Okay, that is sufficient. Are there other questions? And if not, I'll proceed to ask about the special conditions. No, I'm not seeing any. Okay. So are you aware, Ms. Grant, that there are nine special conditions to be agreed to for accessory dwelling units? Have you seen those?
I have not, sir.
You have not? Okay, I will read them to you, and you will need to agree to all of them in order to proceed with this application. Okay, number one. Number one, the accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent of use and purpose to the primary structure and does not exceed 750 square feet.
I agree.
Okay. The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as the single-family dwelling.
That will, I agree.
The accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of the single-family dwelling or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood. And that means no new entrance or exit to an accessory dwelling unit shall be constructed on the front or frontage side of the single-family dwelling. No new curb cut from the street shall be constructed, and the exterior design of the accessory dwelling unit shall be compatible with the single-family dwelling through architectural use of building forms, scale, and construction materials.
I agree.
The owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence.
I agree.
The owner of the property shall provide the City of Nashua with a covenant for filing with the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds, along with the appropriate filing fees, and the covenant shall read substantially as follows, that you covenants and agrees that the property located at your address contains an accessory dwelling as defined by the City of Nashua Land Use Code, Section 190-264 of Article 42, that use of the property is permitted as a special exception granted by the Zoning Board of Adjustment. The continued use of the accessory dwelling unit is conditioned upon compliance with all current and subsequently adopted ordinances and statutes applicable to the property. Granting of a certificate of occupancy of the accessory dwelling unit shall be contingent upon receipt of the covenant and fees.
I agree.
One additional off-street parking space is required among the, above the minimum standard for a single-family house.
I agree.
Okay. An interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
I agree.
The single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership, including by condominium ownership.
I agree.
And last, accessory dwelling units shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings and shall not be associated with manufactured housing as defined in RSA 674:
I agree.
Okay. Okay, those are all the special conditions, and we have no more comments from the Board. At this time, I will ask if there is anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this application.
Mr. Chair, I see none.
I see none. Is there anybody here with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
Mr. Chair, I see none.
Thank you. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. This is where the Board will deliberate amongst itself, so no more applicant input is appropriate. Ms. McKay.
Oh, I don't know, I'm still, I'm gonna wait and see what I guess everyone else says. I'm still perplexed with that number seven between the connecting doors. I, I guess I'm gonna, that's all I have to say for right now.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
You know, the interior door situation, you know, has given me pause. Of course, you know, I think we all recollect that the interior door is like a direct result of what we're previously used to as a familiar accessory dwelling unit. Since the law changed... Since the law changed, uh, I think we've only had familiar, uh, living ADUs come before the board. Uh, by the applicant's testimony, this is clearly, you know, a, a non-familiar, uh, rental. Uh, I, I think that's what it is by testimony. And, but as, as I understand the state law, that's what's permitted. And, uh, so I was wrestling with the internal door. And I guess I go back and forth a little like, you know, is it too much to go through the garage, you know, versus what we're traditionally used to a familiar door that could be used to assist the family member. Well, I'm not sure if that's the case, so I'm leaning towards the interior door and the, between the garages is okay. Uh, not that I think it works well for the city of Nashua, but that's what the law is and, and that's where we're at. So that's, uh, where I'm at on that. And I'm also looking at other opinions.
Ms. Poirier, did you have your hand up for a comment?
Yes, thank you. A previous example of a non-familial tenant in an accessory dwelling unit that comes to mind would be 18 Smithfield Terrace. I believe that was within the last couple of years.
Yeah, I, I do remember that, that that's in my own neighborhood. So, um, we have had that and we've had, uh, several applicants say that they would have an interior door, but it would be, remain locked. Apparently that meets the, the state law.
Does.
Yeah. And yeah, I mean, it, it, it does seem a bit odd. Now, we, we can have our personal opinions, but we, we have to go by what the state law says. Uh, Mr. Shaw, any comments?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of the application with, as long as the, the applicant, you know, was willing to add that door in the garage. Um, so I think that, you know, when I, at least as I try to parse it down to, you know, that, that language again. I mean, an interior, sorry, an interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit. So I think in this case, the applicant is defining the primary dwelling unit as essentially the existing house along with the existing part of the garage, basically. And then the new addition is the second bay of the garage and the upstairs living space. And so I think by connecting those two dwelling units as defined essentially by the barrier of the interior garage wall is sufficient to meet what is intended. I think, um, and I, I recall when everything was happening with the, to go to the bigger point about, you know, having, you know, this no longer is classic in-law type of thing. It's just accessory dwelling units. My understanding from the way the legislation was, was adopted and passed was with the express intent of allowing people to remain in their homes and potentially generate extra income by having an accessory dwelling unit that could be rented to somebody else. Yet, you know, by maintaining that the owner occupies one of the units, you don't just allow a property to become purely a rental property. So I think all those things are exactly what this applicant is intending to do, that the law change, as it currently is defined, intends to support and meet. So I'm very much in favor of, of what is being asked.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application. Again, my concern was the same thing about the interior, um, access. Um, because I did recognize it was a wall in that garage. So, um, I'm satisfied with the applicant stating that the interior door would be there. And as far as the, you know, the situation again, um, with the layout of the, of the accesses, you know, the common, common area or the common throughway would be through the garage. We've seen other, other situations like this. And most recently, you know, again, off of Almont Street across from Michigan, there was an L-shaped, ranch and it was, the, the main access is the common was through the garage. So to me, it's, you know, typical. It's just that this is a little different in design, uh, but it, but it meets, I think, the purpose of the, the dwelling unit, uh, regulation. So I support the application.
Thank you. Ms. Boras.
I also concur with my, my colleagues. As long as there is that interior door and even though it's locked, it meets all the criteria. So I am in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. McCarr.
Uh, well, I, I do take a different approach. I, I, I think that when it comes to the interior door, and I certainly could be wrong, but I think the intent was twofold. One, the intent is, is that there, it doesn't have to be a relative, but that there's a higher level of familiarity um, between somebody who lives in an accessory dwelling unit and somebody who lives in the principal dwelling unit than might be true for a conventional two-family. Uh, and secondly, I, I don't think it meets the intent of the interior door. Well, I'll back up also. I think one of the reasons why an interior door requirement is there is because it also allows in a single family home setting for the potential for the accessory dwelling unit to become part of the single family home again. Uh, I, I, when I look at this, I don't think that it meets the, what I think is the intent of the interior door requirement. But I also don't think it actually meets the letter of the interior door requirement. I don't believe that going from the primary dwelling into a garage, through a door to another garage, up a staircase and then across a porch is an interior connection. So I don't think it meets the intent and I don't think it meets the letter of that requirement.
Thank you. And, uh, I, I'm sort of on the same page as Mr. McCarr. I, I don't consider the interior, the door, a, a door added in between the two bays of the garage to be, uh, to meet the letter of, of the ordinance, uh, in the law requiring an interior door. I am well aware that we have approved ADUs in the past where, uh, let's say there's a stairway up to the ADU and that, at the end of the stairway, there's a locked door. And presumably the, the primary unit owner doesn't have the keys or maybe has them somewhere else. But I also, you know, have to recognize that the way that, um, the state wrote the law, um, it, it's really fairly liberal in terms of, of not requiring a familial relationship. And, uh, implicitly encouraging, uh, these ADUs as, as rentals. I, I don't personally like it, but, um, the, the law seems to be written that way. I would certainly be a lot happier if there was an actual door between the two, uh, between the primary and the ADU rather than, uh, you know, as Mr. McCarr says, you would go through a locked door into the garage, which is not part of the ADU. And, um, and, uh, and then, then, then up into, into this mudroom. If there was no wall there, that would maybe be a little bit different. You know, especially because the, well, this, this is an interesting thing because if the wall is there, that really implies that the garage belongs to the ADU. And then it adds a lot of square footage to the ADU and exceeds the 750 square feet. Uh, so that bothers me as well. I'm, I'm really struggling with this. Any other comments from board members or, uh, Mr. Shaw?
I guess maybe, uh, Mr. Falk or Ms. Poirier can help me on this, but far as garage, that doesn't count towards the floor to the square footage of the ADU. Is that to be my understanding?
That's correct. We would just, we would just count the living space, the air conditioner heated living space. So.
Okay.
And I guess, Mr. Lionel, I kind of feel like, you know, maybe at the end, maybe you were just kind of more thinking out loud, but to me, if you're kind of, Mr. McCarr's point, I understand where he's coming from. He's saying basically essentially traverse through the garage. Um, and, you know, plus the, the steps, but I think maybe generally I would took his point more as get from one living area to another living area of the two units requires traversing a garage. That that doesn't, in his mind, you know, meet the spirit and intent. Um, but you were kind of arguing a little bit more about, well, a wall versus no wall. Kind of feel like that, to me, that seemed like a secondary issue. It seems like it comes down to more about the garage itself being kind of the connector. I, I, I do, I seem to recall, you know, over the course of many of these that we have had, I thought at least one or two where the only common connection was in the garage space, like where there was like maybe an interior stairwell in the garage that went directly up to the ADU. So at least in my mind, I think this board has previously viewed that as sufficient to meet that criteria. And, but I realize that these are, you know, at some level, a little bit subjective in terms of how you're viewing, you know, even your first, first item in the ADU, um, special exception, you know, criteria is should be clearly incidental and subordinate and extend use and purpose to the primary structure. So I think that's definitely met, but I don't, I mean, you know, I guess maybe to Mr. McCarr's point, I appreciate what he's saying, but I'm not sure I see anything else in the, in the requirements that really does indicate that unless, unless there's something more in the global definition of ADU in our code that I'm not recalling that would kind of indicate.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I just wanted to throw out a couple of thoughts. I appreciate what Mr. McCarr was saying. You know, thinking back to when the state uh, had implemented this. The examples that were given at our training in June were, were all, uh, first of all, further up north out in the country, but they were big old farmhouses, big old colonials of which the family had aged and there's just like one living member left, like say the, the matriarch. And she's struggling to, you know, hold on to the property and it was, uh, designed so that there could be some income for the, for the, for that person to, to remain in the house. And so I, I'm thinking of to, to, you know, with what Mr. McCarr says, the, the, the intent, I, I don't think was to, to build an addition that was a rental unit, but was to have an existing home be able to accommodate some separate, say rental income. But I, but I think part of the struggle that this board has and, and I'm still having, I'm, I'm not, you know, with the, the interior garage is the proposal here is to build an addition, which is clearly, uh, you know, a, a non-familiar rental with, you know, it, it, to what Mr. McCarr says, I, I couldn't really ever see this being one unit again because there's, you'd have to traverse down and around through the garage. And I, I guess that's a struggle I have. I, I think I'm sensitive from other board members and, and I just wanted to bring up that history of, you know, making minor modifications to a big house to accommodate, you know, other income. And, and to me, you can argue that that's been maybe morphed a little bit into adding on a rental unit that's you, you know, not, I mean, you could argue it either way. It's in the spirit or you could say it's not in the spirit of that by what's being proposed here without that. What I would think is the typical connection, not through, through the garage or through a wall, door, door in the wall in the garage. So I, I mean, I, I'm struggling with this, uh, at this moment as well.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. McKay.
Thank you. I too am. I continue to struggle with this. And initially, as Mr. Courier said, ADUs came into being, um, it was individuals with disabilities and their families that first brought this forward. And it was for their families and to have in-laws, to have adult children, to have a place to reside. Um, and when they changed it to accommodate, um, rental units, I think what they should have done was either addressed the, uh, number seven in the special exception or leaving it as it is. If there needs to then be that interior door, because if there is not an interior door between the accessory and the primary, then it's not an ADU. And if it's not an ADU, how do we agree to allow an ADU when it does not meet all the specific criteria? I think the legislation did itself a disservice and Mr. McCarr is correct. He, he put into words what I couldn't. It was what I was thinking, but his words, his language was much better. It was the intent, the intent of this law states clearly that there has to be a connection between two and it can't be through that garage. It seems like they're having two separate units. They're two individualized units that are not connected and that to me is not an ADU. And I, I can't support the application the way it is now because it doesn't meet, in my estimation, number seven of the special exception. Therefore, to me, it's not an ADU. It's a rental unit.
Well, yeah, thank, thank you. I'm, you know, it, there actually, I think really what, what you intended to say was it, it's a duplex.
Thank you, or an apartment.
Yeah. Mr. Shaw.
Sorry. Um, so I, I guess I'd like to maybe get another opinion from Mr. Falk. Um, so does the city consider garage spaces, garage structures when it comes to a principal dwelling?
Well, we don't. They're not considered part of the, um, like of the 750 square feet that someone's allotted. That doesn't include the garage or basement or an attic or a mechanical room, things like that. It's only the air conditioned or heated living space. Um, so whether the accessory dwelling unit that's proposed is included in the space or not, we, we wouldn't count it towards the 750 square feet. But I, I've been listening to the conversation and we, we have had several other ADUs that have had access to a garage in one way, shape or another. I can't think of any exact examples off the top of my head, but I know I could find a few. I, I sense that the board is struggling with the design. ADUs are special exceptions, so they're generally a, uh, a use that's approved by the board. I just wanted to throw out a possible solution. Maybe the board wants to consider a possible table and let the applicant come back with a, a design that might be more, you know, might meet your standards a little bit better. I hate to design it for them. I mean, this is what they've submitted. I think if that garage wall wasn't there, it would work, although it wouldn't be the most typical design. I think it can work, but it, it's not the one that you typically see, but as long as there's access inside, whether it's to the garage, I know it's a little different than others, but it is an access. You know, perhaps the applicant may want to redesign it a little bit more, a little bit better. Just a thought.
Mr. Courier.
Well, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to design anything for the applicant, but something that, you know, in just a cursory look at the current proposal and the struggle that the board has, perhaps there could be an interior door from that middle room, if we want to call it that, uh, to the second floor of the proposed new, uh, area. And in, say if there was, then to me that meets everything that uh, the state and the city are, are seeking. If there's an interior If there's an interior door there versus going through the door in the garage. And it would seem to me, just from a, just brief look, like you're, you're only a few steps away. You know, it seems like that middle room is maybe three or four steps of a different height to the other, so you could have a door and some stairs there. But I, I, I wouldn't say that with any certainty, but I would think there's perhaps an opportunity for the applicant to consider that and see if, if that's possible. Because to me, that would be right in line with what an ADU is intended to be.
Mr. Shaw.
I guess I'd also be in favor of tabling to give the applicant that chance. I'm also wondering if we could perhaps have the question asked of Corporation Counsel as to whether or not the connection through a garage would, would meet the intent of the connection between, you know, the interior door, connection between the primary and accessory dwelling.
So I think we can ask Corporation Counsel and possibly the Building Department as well, because it might be a housing code issue or building code issue as well. So I, I can check with Mark Collins. He's the Plans Examiner. He, he reviews all of our residential plans, so I think a combination of both of those would work.
Mr. Carter.
After the state had made the change, some of the aldermen had, or older women, certainly because Mary Ann Golja from my Ward Eight was part of that group that had articulated the language which we see for the city of Nashville, and, and in particular, that interior door. And, you know, so the only name I remember was, was Mary Ann, who's no longer, you know, an older woman, but, you know, it would, if, it would be interesting to revisit what the intent, what their intent of that door was. Because as, as I recall, it was like in line with Mr. Mencaro's description. But it's not, you know, the intent isn't there in the statement, you know, in our ADU, you know, sentence about the interior door. It's just the sentence without any intent behind it. But I, I've, I've forgotten, or I maybe I wasn't part of the discussion that went into the alderman crafting that language. I think that was after Mr. Shaw was on the board, but so I don't think anybody here had any firsthand knowledge of that.
Mr. Shaw, you had a comment?
Yeah, so I had earlier pulled up RSA 67472 and Section Three, Chapter Three, whatever it is, is a simple statement. It's almost exactly what we have, I think, in our, in our text. It's "An interior door shall be provided between the principal dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit, but a municipality shall not require that it remain unlocked." So I think we're, that's the extent of what the RSA states with regard to that connection. But it does require it.
We, we have had several through a garage. And we, we've seen several different, different examples of how it can be designed. So some are better than others, some are, don't have much of a distance to walk. They're all, they're all different.
Well, we, we have, Ms. McKay.
Yeah.
Seeing as we have all these questions, concerns, comments and conundrums, would a motion to table be in order?
It would certainly be in order, but we would then need to decide what it is we're asking the applicant to do and to, to come back later. I mean, we have one option that we've already provided, which is to put a door in this wall between the two garage bays. Does that meet the letter of the law? I'm uncertain. The other option would be for the applicant to redesign this ADU so that there is a more, I'll call it obvious, inter- interior door between the two. Yes, we've had ADUs where it accesses to the garage, but there hasn't been a wall between the primary dwelling unit and the access through the garage to the ADU. Does this matter? I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm struggling with this. I saw Mr. Shaw first.
I mean, I also think we have the, you know, we can pursue what, you know, I brought up and Mr. Fogg responded to, as far as we could check with Corporation Counsel, and he also noted with the Building Inspector, Building Department. So I think those are things, those are a couple of actions we could take, even if the applicant is not interested or whatever in pursuing any sort of possible, you know, new proposal. So I think we have at least two, two things that could be done independent of what the applicant might or might not be interested in doing.
Thank you. Mr. Courier. Or, or no, it's Mr. Boucher. You had your hand up. Trying to remember which. The, the, the little images move around, so I wasn't sure. I think it was Mr. Boucher got his hand up.
So I've been listening. And again, I, I, I understand the, most of the board's concerns. Again, I, I don't discount that at all, and I just want to know that I support that. Again, I'll support a, a table. I think that sometimes what, what I, or what a, a person would see as a, you know, more plausible design or what it looks like is really kind of, becomes for me, a personal thing. And, and so I, I'm just looking at it if it's, you know, again, I appreciate Mr. Shaw reading that statement on how the RSA reads. I, I think to me, it's kind of pretty wide open, whether, you know, as far as the, as the access to the other unit. I do appreciate the fact that, you know, folks have been on the board longer than I have, members have more experience with this and, and at a time when the law was different. But I think the way the law is now, you know, leaves a lot more open. I think the applicant, you know, is very honest with us in saying, hey, this is going to be a rental u- unit. I think that sometimes, in the, you know, in the past, would have, you know, definitely been, been an issue, but I don't know if it can be an issue anymore. Again, I, I think that the applicant hasn't met all the criteria. Again, the design, in my mind, may not be the greatest or for somebody else, but this is what the applicant's proposing. So I, I still think that the applicant meets that, that criteria, maybe not to the set, you know, to the satisfaction that we all like to a different degree. But again, I'll, I'll support a table. But I'm just, you know, again stating that it may not be the best design in my mind, but I think from, you know, from going through the regulations, and I think that it does meet that, that number seven, I think it does meet that criteria. Maybe not probably perfectly, but I think it meets that. And, you know, again, this is something that's an improved view, so I, I could even consider whether or not it's a rental or not, or whether or not, you know, in that case, it's, i- if it's, if it's a viable option for this, it's just, it is. And so again, I'll support a table if that's where the board wants to go.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mencaro has his hand up.
Ah, yes, thank you. Mr. Mencaro.
Just to comment a couple of points. So first, I think, you know, getting input certainly is fine, you know, whether that's from Corporation Counsel or the Building Department. You know, I, I would just stress that ultimately interpretation, zoning ordinance is up to the zoning board. So it really is for this board to determine to its satisfaction whether or not a particular provision of the ordinance is, is met. Ultimately, that's where it lands. And then just speaking to the issue of the connection, from, from my perspective, and I probably take a more conservative view on this than others. I, you know, I do think that there's some that may have been granted in the past that, that I wouldn't have agreed with. But nevertheless, for me, the issue is when it says interior connection, what I would expect to see is a connection pretty direct from the principal unit to the accessory dwelling unit. So if this were to be tabled and to be redesigned, that, that's really what I would be looking for. And, and just again, as I said earlier, in this case, what's, what would be proposed if we went with the door between the garages still is insufficient from my view in that it is connection from the principal dwelling unit to a garage, which then connects to another garage, which then you go up a flight of stairs, then you cross a porch, and then you get to the unit. And that to me is just too many connections that you have to make between different spaces before you get to the accessory use from the principal use. So for me, I would be looking for something much more direct. If that were into an open garage with a staircase up, that would be far more direct. So that, that's just an example. I'm not trying to design it, but, so I don't know if that's helpful or not, but for tabling, you know, that's what I'd be, I would hope to see is a, you know, is a redesign substantial enough to create a connection that's far more direct between the units?
Thank you. Are there other comments at this time? I would like to make a motion to ask the, to reopen the public hearing and ask the applicant if they are willing to have this case table to a future meeting date certain, or if they wish to proceed with the application as presented. So I, I make that motion. Do I have a second, Mr. Shaw? Thank you. Any objections to reopening the public hearing?
Actually, I need to take a vote.
We take, you know, we do need to take a roll call vote. Okay. Ms. McKay, are you in favor of reopening the public hearing?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Courier.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel also vote in favor, so we are going to reopen the public hearing to specifically ask Ms. Grant if she wants to proceed with the application as presented, or if she is willing to table this to a future meeting where she may choose to present an alternate design. Ms. Grant?
I think she might be muted.
Yep. Well, no, she's not muted.
She's on her phone and on another device. It looks like the phone line is muted.
Ms. Grant, can you hear me? You're, I can't, I can't hear you, Ms. Grant. Maybe you need to unmute your telephone line.
She could try hanging up the telephone line and redialing.
Yeah, I think this is the problem of if it got muted, then we can unmute it.
Really? Kate, you can't unmute her?
I can ask her to unmute. For the record, I did not mute her. Thank you.
She's trying to connect, so.
Can you hear me?
Can, but you need to turn to maybe hang up the phone or something. Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. We had two different phones. I seem to be having a problem with my connections. Thank you very much for all of your input and your thought. I am willing to do whatever it takes as far as getting that egress from my dwelling into the ADU. I would not be opposed to not putting up a wall in the garage. That would be the simplest solution for me. If that is not acceptable to the board, I will be willing and will redesign the location of the staircase so that I make sure I have access to the dwelling unit. The storage area above my breezeway is going to be my storage. It will not be connected to, it would not, he will not have access to this area at all. Although the breeze, the above storage area will not be connected to my house. I'll have to use the outside staircase to access that storage area. Could I add a door to that accessing the rental unit or the unit, the ADU?
Well, you, you certainly could, and that would qualify, but in looking at your drawing, I, it's not clear to me where that, where you would place that door that would be acceptable to whoever's living in the ADU, because it looks like it would be, come right into the master bedroom. And I, I don't think they would find that to be accessible. Acceptable.
We would be able to have the doorway accessed to the four-season porch.
Mr. Lionel?
Yes.
If I can jump in, I think Ms. Grant might be talking about adding a door from that storage area into her primary structure that then would, that would, that's what would make the connection, I believe that's. Maybe we can have Ms. Grant clarify that, but that's what I thought she was proposing.
That's correct.
Okay, and?
Where the door would be locked, it really wouldn't be utilized. So in that case, there wouldn't be a, an issue, I don't think, accessing the door. The gentleman could rearrange the furniture around the door in the, in the bedroom. We could work around that, I'm sure. That seems like it would be the, the easiest solution. Least cost effective, maybe?
Yeah. Let me suggest that we, well, Mr. Courier, you, you had something to say?
I was just gonna suggest that, you know, it, it sounds like there might be a, perhaps a real nice solution. Mrs. Grant is kind of, I can see, you know, the gears are turning ahead. I think to me that we might want to, you know, table this to allow her to, you know, think it through. I, I think because trying to design something quick, you know, is, I, I never have success with that. And I was just gonna suggest, I think it might be a good point to, to table it to, to two weeks out, because I think, you know, that would give her time to think it through and perhaps come up with what might be a simple solution or the garage wall removal or whatever she'd like to propose, but it's kind of hard to do on the fly. So I guess I'm just kind of advocating, you know, that we table it and, and look forward to her thinking about it and us taking a look at it probably in two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks or four. Yeah, I, I think I, I would rather, I would like to do that. Mr. Boucher, did you want to say something?
Yes, and, and just, just so that the applicant doesn't come back with some assumptions. I, I think we're not designing it for her, but I think we've got to be very clear on what it is that the issue was. So for example, and again, not in the details, if she was talking about access from her own porch into that unit, and I just want to make sure that if that's not acceptable at all without access from the first floor, that she, so she's, she would have to go outside and she explained, come up the stairs and go into her own porch. But then off that porch, it would be access to a four-season porch, which is heated year-round or through the master bedroom. Or, so, so if that's what it is, she, I don't want her coming back and then being in the same spot because we weren't clear enough or, but you understand what I'm saying, clear enough with that, or if she says, hey, if I just removed the wall in the garage, is, is that, is that okay? Again, we're not saying it's okay or not, because we're not voting on it, but I just want to make sure that she understands fully what, what we're looking for, what it is, the things that we're having an issue with. I, I think I understand, but as somebody who's just come but as, uh, somebody who's just come in front of the board for the first time, I think it's our responsibility and duty to, you know, to help that, you know, our citizens out that we're serving. And just to make sure that she understands, you know, what it is exactly. Um, when we're done, that we're kind of looking for, whether or not she chooses to do it or do something different, that's her choice. But I just, I just want to make that point again, because I'm kind of feeling a little bit that maybe, you know, she might miss that or, you know, might miss out the intent of what we're at, what we're, what we're going at.
Thank you. I, I, I think the intent is that we're looking for a door between the interior of the primary unit and the interior of the accessory unit. And how, uh, Ms. Grant uh, does that, i- it, we're, we're not going to design it for her. She may want to consult with the planning department. And, uh, and, and the building department to see what, what might work for, for her. I, for myself, access from the, from the porch, even the enclosed porch is not what I would be looking for. But yes, the, the ordinances, the laws allow the door between the two units to be locked, but there does need to be what's said to be an interior door. And, um, and I'm not seeing that. So I would agree that we should table this to a future meeting. Ms. Grant, is, is two weeks sufficient for you, or would you like some additional time? The next, uh, the fir-, the next meeting is March 23rd, and then the meeting after that is April 13th.
Mr. Lionel, I believe the March 23rd meeting will be sufficient time. I will redesign the staircase and the entry, the access entryway, and we'll get back to you with the new design since it appears that the removal of the garage wall will not be sufficient and or adequate. Am I correct? Because it needs to, the egress needs to go directly from my dwelling to the new dwelling and there will be no leeway on that. Am I correct?
I, I think that's a fair assessment.
That perfectly fine. I am perfectly willing to adhere to all the guidelines set before me and I will redesign the egress so that I can access it through my dwelling.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, uh, I'll make a motion to table this case to the March 23rd meeting. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Uh, Ms. McKay, how do you vote? We're making, we're making a motion to table.
I vote in favor of a tabling motion.
Mr. Courier?
Uh, Mr. Courier votes in favor of the table motion.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And, uh, I, Mr. Lionel also vote in favor. So this, uh, case is tabled to, uh, March 23rd and, uh, we'll, we'll look at it then. Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr., Mr. Falk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For Miss, for Mrs. Grant and the board, since that meeting is on March 23rd, we sent the packages out one week in advance of the meeting. So if we can get some revised drawings before next Monday, that would be great. I know it's pretty quick, but that's, um, that'll be, you know, for the board to get them in time with the package.
By the 19th would be very helpful.
By the 19th.
Ms. Grant is?
Excuse me, earlier than that.
Can you do that, Ms. Grant?
I will do my very best.
Okay. And if not, then we'll reschedule it for a, a later meeting.
Correct. We will have to do that.
Okay, so that, uh, that concludes for now, uh, case number one.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Case number two, excuse me. Owner Riverside Properties of Nashua, applicant is, uh, Hartz Peer Support Center of Greater Nashua, Region Six, address five Pine Street Extension, uh, sheet 77 lot 10, requesting use variance to allow a three-bedroom, short-term transitional stay facility in a portion of an existing building. This is in the GI slash MU zone, word four. And, uh, we have a, uh, someone here to present the case, Mr. Lewis. Uh, please give your name and address for the record and then, uh, tell us what you're planning. Uh, you're muted, sir.
Yes, thank you for having me. Thank you for your time. My name is Ken Lewis. I'm the Executive Director of Hartz. I live at, uh, One Oriole Court, Merrimack, New Hampshire.
Okay, please walk us through your application.
Okay, um, I'm not sure if you're familiar with Hartz Peer Support Center, but we're an adult educational wellness center. On every, uh, in the mental health centers of New Hampshire, there's 10 regions in Nashua. We're the, uh, uh, Region Six in Nashua. We've been around since 2009. We've been in the, uh, Mill Cove Building since that time. We've been residing here at, uh, uh, one, uh, five Pine Street, one G. We approached the city of New Hampshire and this board for a, a variance for a two-bedroom respite, short-term stay, one to seven days for an alternative to hospitalization. And the state of New Hampshire has approached four of the peer support centers in the state. Uh, myself, Blair Ma, uh, myself, Keen, uh, uh, Portsmouth in Manchester to, uh, with the, under the 10-year mental health plan. We're trying to alleviate the problem of the emergency room, the overflow in the emergency room by providing some community services. And we, we would do is provide, uh, a three-bedroom setting similar to the respite where it would be fully staffed 24/7, allowing folks to either prevent going into hospitalization to stay in the community or for people coming out of the state hospital or residential program to be able to step down into the community and be more successful by connecting to the resources in the community, working with the, um, community mental health centers and other providers in the community. So what we're asking is if the city would allow us to have a variance, uh, from, uh, a zoning regulation. This building is a industrial zoning, the old mill, and, um, we are just asking that you could, uh, give us another variance for the zoning in this, uh, setting where, uh, we're similar, we're connected to the building. We are, there's only one space in between us, but we're, we would be in the same general area. It would be, it would be a three-bedroom with, uh, staff. If you look at the, uh, layout, uh, there'd be the front door, uh, the, the, uh, there was a youth behavioral health program there called Directions. Uh, they've just recently vacated the property and upgraded down to Technology Way. So it gave us an opportunity to try to set up this program. So, um, as you, as you go in the front door, there's, there's a reception area or receiving area. And then there's three offices that we're going to convert into bedrooms that would be fully handicap accessible. And, um, and there, one of the bedrooms we would make, uh, that's closer to the interior and, uh, egress that's handicap accessible would be the handicap bedroom. Uh, there is two handicap bathrooms already built into the facility. We would be, uh, asking, uh, Riverside Properties to, uh, build, uh, retrofit a handicap bathroom and, um, so again, I think, uh, I'll just ask for questions at this time.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions from the board? Mr. Courier?
Well, you know, um, I, I don't think, but maybe you could, uh, help me out, Mr. Lewis. There, there probably haven't been, but, but I don't know for sure with that other program that recently left. Would this be the first time there's folks, uh, kind of living there versus, to my recollection, this has just been a, like a hundred percent business versus maybe residential, not that it's really a residential, but people will be there 24 hours. Has, has that, is that kind of new to this area or has that been in the, this building complex before? Do you know?
Well, we were the first one to do it in 2014. Uh, I, I put in a, a variance application to, uh, to rezone, uh, the respite center. So when we were upstairs by the music school, we moved down and, uh, that's what the variance was for. We were approved that in 2014. So it would be just an addition to that, plus, uh, mobile crisis will be on the other side of this building. And they'll be, uh, I don't want to say too much, but they'll be having three bedrooms over there as well for their community mental health center, uh, residential mobile crisis beds.
So I, I would take it that Riverside Properties are the owner. I mean, th- they're here on the application, but I, 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 it would be my expectation that they are fully aware of your proposal and they're not objecting to it because they're, I'm assuming they're giving you the okay to come to us, so they're supportive of your proposal. Is that, is that right?
Correct. We've been, uh, residents with them since 2019, uh, when we spun out of Harbor Homes, uh, excuse me, 2009, uh, July 1st, 2009, we spun out of Harbor Homes to start this program and become an total independent 501(c)(3). So yes, they, they, uh, we went from, uh, three Pine Street originally, and then we went up to five Pine Street upstairs. And then in 2014, when we, uh, applied for the variance, we went downstairs in the back of the building. And so, yeah, we've been here for a long term and we've been, uh, you know, we've provided for the community many years. We've, with the residential program, we've served, uh, hundreds of folks and prevented hospitalization there. And we just want to continue that in our community.
All right, thanks. Because i- it's my observation, like, uh, during the work week, not that I'm here that often, but a few times during the work week, you know, there's a lot of businesses, a lot of activity. Y- y- you know, if you take advantage of the park, you know, walking through there like on a, a Sunday, it's kind of very quiet. There's, there's nobody around. It seems all the businesses are shuttered. I could see a situation where having some residences here is actually an uptick, so to speak, because it's kind of a little more folks around and not so desolate. So I, I, uh, it's not really a question, it's just an observation where, uh, even though it's kind of the general industrial zone, it may not be at all a negative thing to have a, you know, a residential, uh, a temporary residential, uh, portion here, uh, stay facility. So I, I guess it's not really a question, it's just maybe my observation of what the, uh, that little complex is, is like at different times of the week.
Yeah, Minesfall's been, uh, a great tribute or, or support for Hartz Peer Support Center and for Peer Respite, and I'm sure that it will be a great, uh, a tribute to these, uh, folks that will stay in the Step Up Step Down Program, the new program for just walking and, you know, the mental health and, uh, physical exercise. And just the, the therapy there is just amazing. So, uh, we've loved the spot and, uh, we hope that we will continue to be here for a long time.
Mr. Mancara?
So, uh, i- if I may, is, is it fair to characterize these, this as, um, these, you, well, this residential unit as directly related to the programs and services that you provide? And isn't something that is or, or would be, um, a residential unit apart from the, your program?
Uh, no, it would be within our mission statement and, uh, what we would, uh, agree with folks as we screen folks and, and they agree to be part of this program, that they would be becoming into the center and being part of the center's activities, reconnecting, uh, socially, uh, working in, you know, connecting with the, a community of peers. So it'd be part of their daily activities.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Um, sorry, I feel like I'm perhaps just a little bit confused. The one thing I'm trying to understand is, is the previous variance that we granted with, for the two bedrooms, I think that you said is for like one to seven night stays. That's still in existence and will continue to be, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And this is just, this is an additional, like, if you will, expansion or different, you know, part of the program that you wanted to also provide. Um, so that, that usage remains unchanged and this is a new additional usage.
Correct. It's part of the 10-year mental health plan that state has come up with before COVID-19 hit us. Uh, we were all planning for what better services we could provide in the community to minimize, um, the overcrowdedness in the emergency room. If you remember, there was a large, uh, agreement or settlement with the state a few, quite a few years ago, and that we've been part of that, uh, an agreement and continue to make sure that this, uh, minimizes that impact here in, in our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Mancara, did you still have a comment? Your hand is still up? You're muted, sir.
Sorry, I just took it down.
Okay, yeah, this happens. Uh, any other board members with questions for the applicant? I am not seeing any, and I'm also not seeing anybody present in the meeting that, uh, doesn't have business before the board. So it looks like there are no people with, uh, speaking in favor or with questions, concerns or opposition?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
That is, okay. So I'm going to, um, close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Uh, ask for comments from the board. Mr. Courier, you're first.
Uh, I'm in support of the application. Uh, you know, in 2014, this was a little bit of a unique request in a way for the area, but it seems to have fit in just fine. And, and it certainly seems to be a great program for the city of Nashua. I look at this as an expansion for, uh, of, of a successful program. And, and so I think it meets the criteria and, and I fully support it.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I likewise, I'm in support. I think, um, you know, there is the track record. I think it's also clear this is a very important and critical need for the city and the state to be providing. And I think it's something that definitely will benefit the entire community. Again, I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I also support the application. Um, again, um, I'm just, yeah, just agree with the, my, 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 uh, board members that I've already told. Thank you.
Mr. Mancara?
I, I also support the application. I, I think this is a direct outgrowth of the services that they provide. Now, I just note that there are a number of social service providers in this immediate area, uh, including in this complex. And, uh, I think it's consistent, uh, also with the mixed-use character of the area.
Thank you. Ms. Boras?
I also fully support the application and I concur with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I'm in support of the application for all the comments and reasons that my colleagues have already stated.
Thank you. And I, uh, Mr. Lionel, I'm also in support of the application. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner Riverside Properties of Nashua, Inc. Uh, the applicant is Hartz Peer Support Center of Greater Nashua. The address is five Pine Street Extension. Uh, the request is for use variance to allow a three-bedroom, short-term transitional stay facility in a portion of an existing building. This is in the GI slash MU zone. And, um, the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Specifically, this is a, for a, um, 30 to 90-day residential program to, uh, provide, uh, support to persons. thirty to ninety day residential program to provide support to persons recovering from mental health issues, and the applicant already has been using space in the same facility for similar but shorter term stays as part of the program for the last six or seven years. The the it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, there's no indication of any effect negatively on surrounding personal property values, it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served, and with that, I move to approve this use variance.
Ms. McKay, I saw your hand up for for the second, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Nope, uh, Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, also vote in favor, congratulations, your application passes, please be aware, as usual, there's a thirty day window of appeal that if somebody wishes to appeal this decision, please talk to Mr. Falk of the planning department if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thanks. Okay, we have no rehearing requests that I'm aware of. We do have an agenda for the March twenty third meeting with four items on it, does anybody see any issues of regional impact?
I have no.
No.
I am not seeing anybody suggesting that there is a regional impact, and I don't see any either, so there isn't. We do have minutes from the February twenty fourth meeting, has everybody had a chance to review them, and are there any comments for edits, Mr. Courier?
Um, I I didn't find any issue with the February twenty fourth minutes, but on my my voting record that I tabulate here and then provide, you know, either that evening or the next day, I had the motion and the second to the motion incorrect on the the first case that we heard, and you may remember that the first case on the on the minutes was actually the last one because that.
Because the applicant wasn't there.
Applicant wasn't there, and I I inadvertently started filling out the first page, if you know what I mean, so I can correct my my minutes, the ones Mr. Falk publishes are fine, but on my record on that first case, the Shaw and Boucher should be reversed, so.
Okay, so why don't you just send a revised copy of that to the people that you send that to, because that's not part of the official minutes?
Okay.
And and I've been I've been keeping an archive of of the your those emails. So that's fine.
Okay.
Any other comments on the minutes? I I'm sorry, Kate, I didn't hear that?
Sorry, I just said he can send that along to me.
Yeah, all right. Rob?
Yeah, I just noticed something, it's a minor typo, but in the first sentence on the beginning of the it says Wednesday, February two, it should have been twenty thirty, twenty fourth.
Twenty fourth, ah, yes, very good. So I think Carter is is noting that. He's muted.
Muted, Carter.
All right, yeah, I can make that shift, that's no problem.
Okay. Uh, okay.
Consider it done.
Consider it done, so a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Uh, okay, thank you, Mr. Shaw, second? Oh, I'll second it, what the heck? I'm allowed to do that, right? Okay, all those, I'll say, I have a roll call vote, okay, Ms. McKay, how do you vote to approve the minutes?
I'm going to abstain since I wasn't here.
Okay, Mr. Courier?
I vote to approve the minute with the.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Okay, and I will also vote in favor, so that's four to nothing with one abstention, approving the minutes of February twenty fourth. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Shaw, thank you, second? Ms. McKay, thank you. All those in, anybody, any objection to adjourning? I'm not seeing any objection, I don't think we have to have a roll call vote for this, okay, so adjourned at eight oh six P M, thank you.